If everyone's ready.
Recording in progress.
Perfect, thank you. We'll go ahead and open up our regular sessions for today. With our pledge of allegiance and silencing everyone with cell phones. Commissioner Mark Albertson, would you lead the pledge, please?
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, thank you. We'll, just as a reminder for everyone in the room, the meeting is being recorded. I apologize for not being there personally today. Feeling a little under the weather, I think it's just that I'm coughing on everyone. And the weather hasn't been fun to travel with. To start with, I know we have, we have an addition for today's meeting. Tina, do you want to list that along with a number of the deletions?
Yes, an addition today was the BLM Lake County Award Closeout. And then deletions are the timed item from Power Engineers, Lake County Community Justice and USDA Forest Service Agreement Ratification, the Amendment to Marquee Land Sale Agreement 2021-051, the February Work Session Minutes and Regular Session Minutes.
Perfect, thank you. Alright, with that, we'll, we'll just open it up for public comment. If there's any public comment today, we'll entertain that this time and throughout the meeting. Yes, alright, come on up to the mic, Tom.
Thomas Batty, I've been at Lakeview for nine and seven years now. I assume you all saw the papers I dropped out for you. Yeah, pretty much says what I've got to say. We've got a great ski area, not so good this year, but yeah. Even at its best though, it's three months of income out of it and nine months of basically nothing. It's rentals the lodge, which is good. I feel that we can get at least six months of mountain biking on there. Too, if we just build the trails. Lots of other areas have done it. Most of them that have the facilities to support it end up making more money with the mountain bikes than they do the skiers. Now, I'm not asking for lift support immediately, but I do want to, with the blessing of this body, get the studies done, look and see if it's really feasible for this hill.
I was just asking, and you've already talked with the Fremont Highlanders, the ski club?
Yeah, yeah, I attend all their meetings since I'm kind of on the board. I'm never sure just where I stand there, but they like having me around, I guess. And yeah, they are definitely enthused. On the worst end, it was eh, okay, sure, why not? On the positive end, it was yeah, let's go, do this, I want to get my bike out.
This has been a goal of previous county commissioners. I know that you were working hard, Commissioner Albertson, to try to get a trail to tie back into Blackcap Road. This stays on the, on the ski area boundary, I assume.
Yeah.
You know, I think it's nothing but a good thing to create more recreational.
Yeah, in Lake County.
And on Lake County property.
Yeah, and I've also thought about connecting the trail, you talked about it. That might be bad, you know?
So, just to give an update of what kind of went down. So, the trail would go up Blackcap Road to the town boundary, which is just right at Davis Bailout, just up from that. And it would go through town, through town and county property, across Collins Pine, the ridge top across Collins Pine and into the ski area. I didn't want to go on the Forest Service boundary because of NEPA and how long that would take. I was working with Clarence Knudsen from Collins Pine, and then Clarence passed away. Matter of fact, I had met with him two days prior. And we had talked about rejuvenating, because they got new leadership into the, into Collins Pine. And so that might be something that we'd want to start again, talks with.
Definitely.
Because they seem to be fairly interested around it, and so.
Yeah, and I'd love to see whatever plans, drawings you might have of the route to this ski.
If I have one on my computer saved, but God only knows how I'll find it. Anyways, yeah, so I'm, I'm all game for more trails and stuff. And so, if you think you can make it work.
Sure you have to try. And that's basically what I want to do right now is just make sure it is feasible. That's not a degree that it's a good mountain for it.
Yeah, my concerns were, you know, what? You addressed it in your, your letter, but you know, like for curves and turns and making a
Yeah.
Some type of a structure to help with that, doesn't make that turn, have it hold up or doesn't all just blow away. And then have it not be in the way for grooming.
Yeah.
For the winter. And it looks like you got that all figured out.
Yeah, that's it. I don't plan to do a, you know, building up trails in the groomed areas.
Right. Sounds like a lot of work to me, but it's certainly possible. Yeah. Appreciate you having the endeavor to try to increase recreation, you know?
Like, it benefits hotels, motels, restaurants, gas stations. Pretty much everybody will benefit. Actually bring more people into recreation, not just the bikers.
Right. So, these other ski areas that do this, do they, do they maybe run their chairlift on a weekend or?
Depending on the ski area, some of them run it seven days a week.
Yeah.
And that's like, you know, that's bachelor.
Yeah.
And everything there is, what like that. Yeah, I would.
Maybe we could start off small.
Yeah, even said, I'd love to get this ski lift running weekends, even if we just went back to the old summer fest.
Right, right.
Yeah, one day I'd just get people hooked on it.
Yeah.
And there's the access road going up to the summit. Can work as an approach for people riding. Break off from there.
Good. So, Tom, can you give us an update on what's going on with the rest of the trail system? Is there much work on the Timber Trail or?
Okay, last season we had three different work weekends, OTTA, Oregon Timber Trail Alliance, spent up mostly on the very south end of the trails trying to get that god awful mass of damn trees out of there. We got most of it, it was like three quarters of a mile that we still need to cut out.
Are you talking about forest or forest service or?
Some forest land. They've got three more work sessions up there, you know, weekend long, scheduled for this year. And the dates are a little tentative, waiting to see what snow amount looks like. That's probably the area we need to hit still, is the highest portion of the trail. Loose snow slows.
And then what about like through the fire burn areas on through paisley area and all that? Is it still a problem or?
I don't know that much about that area. You know, forests that are still closed or public are of course, yeah, closed. We can't deal with those yet, but we have worked some of the areas. Closed paisley and there, those are a lot easier to clear out. Not as much windfall and not much snow to your rent.
Well, I'm glad they're still working on them.
Oh, yeah.
Have you seen any uptick in the mountain bikers or is it about steady or?
About steady, I'd say. We got type of boost during COVID when that's what you can do, ride your bike by yourself. Slow down a little bit. Still, still getting mountain bikers here.
Thank you for your work on that, Tom.
Ah, my bad.
So, next steps is you got still coming in and evaluating it?
Right, we originally skated the habit here tomorrow. Due to the weather, we backed that off.
That's pretty, I guess we were having a pretty nice clear.
Eh, not nice, depending on the ski hill.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, we're having to drive a mile clear of now. Now, not so much. So, we'll look into it, wait this month, see when it starts to melt off a little bit so we can get an idea of what the mountain looks like, not just the snow.
So?
I think so. And yeah, Chris Bernhardt I've got coming in. He was one of the original board members for the Oregon Timber Trail Alliance, too. So, he, he's been here before, not in quite this capacity.
Well, I think we just need to keep looking for opportunities. You know, sometimes there's some grants that come up, recreation, different things.
Yeah, and you know, like I said, Travel Southern Oregon was, it suits with this. And they immediately gave me a grant or, or they didn't give it to me. They provided a grant to pay Chris from out here.
Oh, excellent.
Good deal. I think so. I think we've got a lot of potential anyway.
Appreciate all you've worked on. And also, just to sum up what you're proposing, aside from one main trail and potentially a few other trails that kind of sprawl out from that, on the ski hill itself, you're looking at some wood structures, like ramps and skinnies. And that's, that's about to sum up, kind of that's what you're looking to do.
Right, I want a number of trails up on the mountain, running from, and mountain bikers use the same code that skiers use, are for green, blue, black trails. And then on the flat there, just by the lodge, I'd like to use some wooden ramps and skinnies and stuff that can be moved out of the way at the end of the season when the snow starts to head. Yeah, I want to make it fun and attractive for everybody. Guys will go flying off jumps down to kids on their first bike, trying to get the feel for it.
So, what is a skinny?
Basically just a wooden trail. Some places where there's ramps.
You miss it, you're in trouble?
Pretty much, yeah. No, it's not as much here, but you know, some areas that are wetter, they'll put the skinnies through there to keep creating a big mudball in front of it.
Oh, gotcha.
And some areas do skinnies just as a, as a passive challenge, yeah.
Gotcha. As you can see, I don't do skinnies.
No, I'm planning to build trails beyond my, I can ride them, but I, if you may, stay there. I can get some details to test them.
Sounds good.
Anything else for me? Alright, thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Appreciate it.
Alright, you bet. Thank you.
Is there any other public comment? And again, we can keep public comment open for the remainder of the meeting. If not, we'll go, we'll move down the list to our first item, Oregon Parks and Recreational Department, 2414 Lake County Law Enforcement Equipment Grant. Daniel Tagg presented on this yesterday to us in our work session before he had to leave town. Is there any discussion on this from the board? And if not, I'll entertain a motion on it.
Chair, I'll make a motion to accept the OPRD 24-14 Lake County Law Enforcement Equipment Grant with a fiscal impact for $12,000 from Title III for the match with a $48,369, excuse me, $48,316 from Oregon Parks and Rec, Grant. I second.
Motion's made and seconded. Is there any discussion?
The idea behind this is for search and rescue. And obviously they got a patient litter that would be attached with it. And it would be, you know, like Daniel said yesterday in our work session, this would be efficient for the sand dunes to help out up there. Be useful in case they have to extract somebody off the dunes. And then also for obvious search and rescue of course and other federal lands.
And I, and I, it looks like they're looking to purchase a 16-foot cargo trailer, side-by-side tracks and a patient litter is what the primary goal is to go with these. Perfect. Alright, I'll call for the question. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
I, I can't quite hear everyone, sorry.
Everybody said aye. We're waiting on the information.
Alright, aye. Motion passes. I, I didn't quite catch everyone. Motion passes. Thank you very much. And then we'll move down to our next item. CIS Cyber Security Grant. Nikki Owls presented on this yesterday. She did a lot of work to try and get this grant. That's going to replenish some dollars that we've already spent on some cybersecurity upgrades for the county. It's about $5,000, or it is $5,000.
Make a motion to approve CIS Cyber Security General Technology, CIS Grant Award of $5,000 for Lake County. Second. Sorry, that was pretty bumbled. Motion there.
Alright, perfect. Motion's made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Thank you. We'll move down to the 2024 Investment Policy Adoption. Melanie Lasly, our treasurer, presented on this yesterday in our work session. We had some great discussion and just, there's been some minor changes. But overall, it's been a fantastic deal for us. Our previous treasurer, Ann Crumright, did a lot of work in setting this up and setting the county up for success. I guess, do the other commissioners have anything to add to that?
Uh, it's just one minor change. You know, updating bank deposits, issuer constraint from 5% to 20% to allow for flexibility of deposits. And that's page 13.
Yep. Alright, I'll entertain a motion on this.
I'll make a motion to accept the 2024 Investment Policy Adoption. As presented? As presented, yeah, that's the easiest. Okay, I'll second that motion.
Alright, motion's made and seconded. Any further discussion?
Yeah, Chair, I just want to bring up just a, a kudos to our employees. You know, we've had two grants go through this morning. Our Trails guy, who's not a county employee, but also got a grant for their work. And then this, this investment policy, which is, which has helped the county save or collect more than a lot of money that we've never had before. I just wanted to kind of give kudos for everybody for. And Daniel. Yeah, for Daniel and the grant.
And.
Nikki and the grant and Melanie and Ann, who Melanie continues working on this investment policy. I just, I just wanted to give everybody kudos for the good work.
Appreciate that. Yeah, these are the, these are the good grants, you know, versus the OHA grants that we have to deal with. And I know we've had a lot of discussion about those in the past. Lot of frustration over some of those, but these are, these are really a good deal and I think they're going to make a big difference. Alright, we'll, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye, motion carries. Thank you. We'll go down to the BLM Lake County Award Closeout. Again, our treasurer, Melanie Lasly, shared on this yesterday. And some of the, with the BLM contract that they have with our sheriff's office, there's been some adjustment to ensure that our officers when patrolling on the BLM lands can also code in straight time rather than just overtime. And to ensure that that's an easy process for them. I guess if there's anything else to add to what we have before us on the amendment or the contract, feel free. And if not, I'll call for the question, or the, I'll entertain a motion, excuse me.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the BLM in Lake County Closeout. Is it a fiscal impact of $11,884.01? To close it out?
Yeah. Yeah, I think it's, it's closing out the original, I guess it's moving those dollars forward, to my understanding.
So that it can be invested in the next buy-ins or agreement. Okay? I'll second.
Alright, motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. We'll move down to the Budget Committee Applications. We had some discussion on this yesterday. We have four applications in front of us. I'll open it up for any thoughts, consideration, or even a motion.
Chair, I just would like to say, you know, I appreciate everybody who applied to serve their county as a budget officer. All of them are very capable of doing the job. But with that said, it would be hard for me not to pick Ann Crumright because she knows the budget so well. And so, I guess my motion would be to have Ann Crumright as our next budget officer. Budget Board Member, excuse me.
Yeah, thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Alright, thank you. Any discussion on that? You know, Commissioner Albertson, you pointed out that we're very grateful for everyone that applies for these committees as a volunteer position. And our budget committee is critical to keeping us going every year. And it's, it's good to have the different personalities and representing the different areas of the county. But more than anything, it's critical to have the expertise. And it's hard to pass that up. We're going to need it going into the next few years, most likely, so.
I just feel like, you know, this does still continue to give us a balanced representation throughout the county. You know, with Clayton Sharp up north, we've got Craig Foster, who spends a good proportion of his time in the central part of the county and then of course, in the south county.
Absolutely. Alright, I'll call for the question. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye, motion carries. The, we have some liaison updates on the agenda. If there's any additional liaison updates, I know we shared a lot of those yesterday. Also, our next timed item is at 11:30. So, we'll have to recess and come back in for that, for the Plymouth Lake Forest Health Partnership Discussion and Update. I know there's a few members of the public in the room. If there's any additional public comment that anyone would like to give at this time, this would be a great opportunity. Or you can come back and rejoin us when we come back in the session at 11:30.
Shelley's coming in.
Shelley's coming.
Perfect. Come on up, Shelley.
I'm Shelley Batty.
It was a chamber update.
I'm Lake County Chamber Director. Thought you might like an update. Want to let everybody know that the full-page spread of what's happening in Lakeview for Irish Days, hit the paper this morning if you haven't seen it yet. So, my task was, the community requested that Irish Days come back like it used to be in the old days. And I'm hoping that five food vendors and 29 events between 1:00 and 4:00 o'clock in the afternoon, all up and down East Street counts. And that you will all come join us and be a part of that.
When is that, Shelley?
That is on March 15th and 16th, Friday and Saturday. Dinner at the Elks with the presentation of Lee and Grand Leprechaun on the 15th. And then Saturday morning, we'll start at 8:00 a.m. with a ribbon cutting at Lacy's Coffee and Flowers, followed by the Shamrock Run, the parade, outhouse races, stick horse races, potato, baked potato hockey, hot potato toss, potato peeling contests. There will be a craft fair. Looks like it's going to be Memorial Hall rather than out here on the lawn. But there will be stuff going on on all three blocks of East Street, between South First and North Second. And live music on East Street, live music in Memorial Hall for the craft fair as well. And then lots of kid events going on. So, that will be really great. Follow that up on May 22nd is Tour de Outback out of Adele. There will be a Metric Century 67 Mile Road Ride and then multiple levels, I believe 20 and 40 mile gravel ride. We've got well over 100 pre-registrations from Boise, Seattle, San Francisco, Portland. So, we'll be getting people into the community. Last year, we had 100 people register and 78 people ride. And this year, we are like double the pre-registrations as of this point in time. So, looking forward to that.
What was the date on that again?
The date on that is June 22nd. And then July 4th, 5th and 6th, the Festival of Free Flight is coming back. I've got 35 confirmations so far. And part of what we're going to be doing is that Saturday night, the 6th, at the Eagles Lodge, we'll be there on board dinner. And that will include a 50-year of piloting. will include a fifty-year of piloting hang gliders for a local hang glider here. So looking forward to that coming up. And then the very next weekend, July thirteenth is the Oregon Timber Trail Grand Apart for their race. Instead of racing the full seven-hundred-plus miles, they're only doing the Lakeview, Cave Lake to Oak Ridge portion of the trail, because that's what they have been able to get logged out after all of the fires and everything else. So the Chamber will be sponsoring a Grand Apart kickoff party for the racers that the community will be invited to. Hopefully, that will be in the town parking, the town hall, the town park up by the Simee Pole. And there's live music and barbecue sets for that.
What's that group again? What's that event?
That is the Oregon Timber Trail Grand Apart. It's sponsored by the Oregon Timber Trail Alliance, and it is a mountain bike race from Cave Lake to Oak Ridge.
Wow.
And it's usually, usually have twenty to fifty racers sign up, and often in that group are a number of like world-known in the biking, mountain bike community, really hardcore experienced racers. And this is sort of one of their fun stops to make, because they feel like most places they race, they're in a bubble, and they're worried about their race and what's going on with them, and Lakeview is so welcoming and opening and team-spirited that we do the kickoff party, and these racers get to actually talk to each other and interact and build relationships that they don't get to many other places. And it gives the local community a chance to come and talk to some of these people that actually spend their lives going long distances on mountain bikes. Can we keep moving forward?
Is, can we vote?
I'm working with Modoc Forest on the Festival of Free Flight, because one of the events is a launch off of Sugarloaf, which is right on the Oregon-California border outside of New Pine Creek, and so, good relationships going on there. And that gives you the next quarter, so.
Good stuff.
Thank you, Shelley.
You're very welcome. Thank you.
Thank you, Shelley.
I have a question.
You have a question, Chair?
If you've taken power engineers off of the items, why can't you do Clamath Lake Forest Health Partnership now? Why do you have to come here?
They're not here.
Oh, they have to be here?
They're coming to Clamath.
Thank you.
Yeah, the power engineers, they canceled just yesterday due to the weather, I believe. They were coming out of the north, and they just canceled due to bad weather. We've postponed that meeting till our work session on April second. That's the, the next date that they will be able to be able to attend from Pacific Core. The Clamath Lake Forest Health Partnership are coming with a group of people to present, and they'll be here at eleven thirty. We have moved them around to facilitate the power engineer presentation, but it, we're not going to make them around again. So we'll just adjourn until, or recess until that time. Come back into session. We have one more timed item on our agenda, Clamath Lake Forest Health Partnership. I can see a bunch of you guys in the room. Hi, Autumn. Hi, everyone. If you guys would like to come up to the mic and give an update.
All right. Thanks, you guys. Thanks for having us. I guess we try and do this every year, just give you an update of what the Clamath Lake Forest Health Partnership has been up to. I might real quick do some interviews of the, interviews, introductions of the people that are here. So I'm Autumn Muir, and I am the Uplands Coordinator for the Lake County Umbrella Watership Council, but also a member of the Clamath Lake Forest Health Partnership.
Amy Marcus with the Fremont National Forest, and also a member of the Clamath Lake Forest Health Partnership.
And then, Casey?
Good afternoon, morning. My name's Casey Johnson. I work for the Oregon Department of Forestry and also a member of the Clamath Lake Forest Health Partnership.
Kevin?
Kevin Burden with Oregon Department of Forestry at Lakeview Protection Unit Forester.
Jason Pedegrue, I'm a studentship forester in Clamath Unit at Oregon Department of Forestry.
And then we have some other members that couldn't make it today, but send their condolences. So we'll just get started. We have a lot to cover, as per usual, so just keep us on track if we're going down rabbit trails, but we like rabbit trails, so have to do so. Next slide. So we're going to kind of focus today on the ways that we've been working to reduce the risk of wildfire in Lake County. Remember, we do this across Clamath and Lake County, but for today's presentation, we're really just going to focus on, on the Lake County projects. Next slide. Just a reminder, the mission for the KLFHP is to facilitate restoration projects on public and private forest lands, and we do that through education, outreach, and diverse partnerships. So we are a nonprofit. We have really simple bylaws. We don't have any paid staff. We share the facilitation and administration. We mostly operate through subcommittees, which some of you are a part of, so you're aware of that. We do meet monthly, mostly in Clamath, with all of our partners, and all of the key partners are involved in all of the processes, but the focus really is managing the forest to reduce risk.
Autumn?
Yes?
I'm sorry to interrupt you, but I need to, Jane says the screen isn't shared, so just one second.
Uh huh, sure.
Can you remind me how to do that?
Sure, yep.
No, sorry, but-
That's okay.
No, thank you.
I think it's on the-
So go to your Zoom. Page.
Because I thought I had it already shared, and it was the wrong one.
Yeah. And then that one, that green? Don't hit the up, just hit the green. Yeah, and then choose that.
Oh, there is.
And then share.
Thank you.
Excellent.
Sorry about that.
And then go back into presenter mode.
Okay.
Perfect.
Okay. All right. Technical support.
Thank you so much, appreciate that.
Okay, so, yeah, so we're ready to go on to next slide. Oh, and again? Thanks. Okay, so, of course, as you guys know, we're not telling you anything new. Time is of the essence when it comes to fires, so this is a map of all of the KLFHP's All-Lands Projects. So you can see, we're biting off quite a big chunk of, of our counties here, and we just wanted to show that if you hit the button one more time. Oh, the, the blue is our GNA projects, Good Neighbor Authority, that the US Forest Service has with ODF, and, go ahead, next slide. Okay, that green that just showed up, you need to, you want to talk about that?
That's our collaborative landscape, collaborative forest landscape restoration project in Lake County.
Yep, and that's the one that's got, it was for, going for ten years, and then it just got renewed for another ten years, right? So a lot of funding coming in from the Forest Service that we can leverage on the private land projects, and then one more click. That is the Clamath Basin Initiative, is that right?
The wildfire crisis landscape.
That we're also-
It's multi-state?
Yes.
Multi-state, Oregon and California. We got funding last year, we're getting funding this year, and then it's unknown whether we'll get funding in the out years.
Where's your funding company?
It's bill and IRA money.
Bipartisan. Bipartisan infrastructure law is the bill, and the IRA is the Infrastructure Reduction Act, so federal funds.
Okay.
And then one more click, those are wildfires. So you can see, we're very good at identifying landscapes that are in need of help, we're just not fast enough to beat Mother Nature to it. So we have lost quite a bit of good habitat and good landscape to these catastrophic megafires, and we'll talk about that a little bit more in the presentation. Okay, next slide. So our process, again, just as a reminder, for KLFHP really is prioritizing the landscapes together, so together meaning multi-agencies, landowners, tribes, anyone that comes to the table has a voice, for sure. We emphasize our landowner outreach, we map and inventory the private lands, provide all kinds of technical support to our landowners, we do the grant writing for the implementation, and then we help facilitate multi-jurisdictional and agency agreements that really helps bring efficiencies to the process. Implementation of that, forest health and wildfire risk reduction projects, and then the final piece is to monitor all of that with ecological, social, and economic benefits. That's kind of our eight-step process that we've been doing for a long time now. And if any of my colleagues want to chime in at any point, just please let me know. Next slide. So this is how we kind of operate. These are all of our subcommittees and our ongoing projects. I won't go through all of those, but you can see there's a lot, and so what this means is there's a dedicated subcommittee of members for each of these boxes that you see, that has a chair and committee members, and those, we meet outside of the full collaborative, and this is just a smaller group, it's easier to get stuff done, and then we kind of take that information, either recommendations or findings, back to the larger group for adoption and keeping everyone in the loop. Okay, next slide. So to focus in, this is just a zoom-in of that other map that had, that we had up for you, of just the Lake County All-Lands projects. So we have the Lake County All-Lands, which is that like lime-green color, that's our biggest one. That was previously two different landscapes. It was the North Warner Landscape, east of three ninety-five, and then Thomas Creek, and we joined those two together, and now just call them the Lake County All-Lands. The pink up north is the Summer Lake All-Lands, and then the orange is our newest one, which is South Warner All-Lands, and then you've got some blue stuff scattered in the Lake County All-Lands, which is the other, is the GNA programs, yep. So, and if you guys have any questions, just stop me at any point. And then SciCin All-Lands, that's been ongoing, that is technically in Lake County, but it's run primarily by the Nature Conservancy, because that's a lot of their, their landscape up there. Okay, so next slide. So to dive, do a little bit of a dive, deep dive into Lake County All-Lands Restoration Initiative, this is that same polygon, just broken up, so it was the lime-green, and I just wanted to show that we have used the Forest Service CFLRP money, we had NRCS and Forest Service Joint Chiefs Awards twice, no, or three times, twice. I got some OWEB grant money that we called Mini FIP, FIP standing for Focus Investment Partnership, and we've had a Phase One completed, and we're now in Phase Two. We've had OWEB, sorry, OWEB is Oregon Watership Enhancement Board, that's a major funder for Watership Council, Prescribed Fire Technical Assistance Grant, we just wrapped that one up. We also have a RAP Grant Resource Advisory Committee from the Forest Service to actually implement Prescribed Fire, we're just getting going on that, and then we're hoping that we are going to be successful with our largest Focus Investment Partnership Grant, which, if successful, that grant application would be for twelve million dollars over six years, focused in this landscape, and we actually have our interview coming up next week, and so we're going to be driving to Salem for an in-person interview. Right now, we are ranked number two out of five, so I'm super excited and hopeful that we will get that, and that will then just bolster all of the momentum that we already have, and, and really help us increase pace and scale of, of doing all the things that we want to do. And that, that Focus Investment Partnership, I should add, is only for private lands, so all that money would be for private lands, but the federal lands would be doing their own work concurrently, so. Any questions there, or add anything? Okay.
Quick thing, actually, sorry.
Collins is a big partner with all of this effort as well, and that is one of the benefits of some of the OWEB funding. Traditionally, a lot of the grand dollars we have does not allow or, you know, accept efforts going towards industrial grounds, but OWEB has provided that flexibility, and this Focus Investment Partnership really would allow us to do a lot of work with Collins upon their landscapes, both in the Thomas Creek area, as well as what's in the North Warner's. So that's a pretty amazing and awesome opportunity, that that really does allow us to treat kind of the three different partnerships or land bases between the federal side, the Forest Service, the private, non-industrial, smaller landowners, and then the industrial private lands.
Thank you, Casey. Okay, next slide. South Warner All-Lands, that's like I said, our newest All-Lands landscape. We have a technical assistance grant for that one right now. So we identified this because the, the NEPA portion, the NEPA analysis has already been completed on the Forest Service side, right? Or it is completed. And that's one of the ways that we leverage landscape-scale projects, is we look to see where the Forest Service is already working, they have their NEPA completed, they're going to be, you know, moving forward, and then we come in and tie in the private land to support that and get a larger landscape address. So where we're at with that is, we have done all of the mapping and inventory, so we had field crews out the last two summers with all the landowners that wanted to participate. Not everyone wants to participate, but the folks that said yes. We did a rapid assessment of their property, just identifying really basic things like overstory, understory, tree species, weed species, just basically a snapshot of what's going on, on their property, and then we put that into a mapping program, and so we can identify like, oh, this spot of your property has a lot of juniper, and it's very dense, and there's a lot of understory. That's a priority to treat, and now we kind of know that. And then we'll use that to give to all of the landowners. We'll have a workshop later this spring. We'll make little binders with all of their maps for their property and a bunch of other supplemental information that will just help them and guide them into making progress towards treating that if they so choose. And then we'll apply for a restoration grant using that mapping information, and I haven't decided when to apply for that yet, because I'm waiting to see about the FIP, so, but that would be the next step. Did you want to talk about the Forest Service side of that at all?
Nope, we're, well, I think the only thing is, is we are starting implementation this year. We're going to prep our first timber sale this summer and hopefully award it this fiscal year. Yeah.
Are you making sure that the travel management plans are, analysis are done in the EIS too?
There's no EIS. There's no EIS.
Really?
No.
Yeah.
Okay, how about the DEIS?
The Forest Service does ACE.
Yeah.
Category Cold Exclusion, and they've gotten away from as many EISs and environmental EAs as they could possibly can, because they're expensive, time-consuming, and they can be protested. And the South Warner project actually did get protested for different reasons, but what's the status on that right now?
The one lawsuit related to using the CE category was upheld in court, so we're good there, and then the regional amendment to the east side screens for cutting trees over twenty-one inches, the Forest Service lost on that lawsuit, so we plan to move forward without cutting those large diameter trees.
It's a good thing to use CE's. It helps keep projects moving. We've been in many of these areas many times, we, the Forest Service has, and what has changed?
And we may have still done a travel management plan for this landscape, even though we did a CE. I don't know that for sure, but that doesn't prohibit you from doing a travel management plan.
Well, when you do the NEPAs and they're in the federal register and the travel management plan hasn't been done, you can stop it.
Well, this wasn't in the federal register.
Before it gets to the federal register.
This wasn't in the federal register, because it wasn't an EIS, so it doesn't, it doesn't go in the federal register.
But nonetheless, the part that we're trying to really highlight today is the white areas on that map, which is the private land that needs assistance and help, and just hoping to tie in timeline-wise to whatever the Forest Service is doing. And I would also add that because we have identified this landscape, we're getting a lot more interest from some of our other partners, such as the local fire department and the RFPAs, things like that, because we're talking about hopefully putting a few- because we're talking about hopefully putting a fuel break in along that kind of boundary between the private land and the Forest Service land. Either for protecting the Forest Service land from fires that could ignite in town and the other way around too, although prevailing wind and the way fire behaves, it would likely go up the hill. But it's just, it's a good way to start to get eyes on some chunk of land that needs a lot of help and has a lot of weeds and has a lot of other, like juniper encroaching. Like, if you look at historical pictures, there were no juniper on that hillside. And you look at today's pictures, they're even, are just out there. And the juniper's coming all the way down to the highway now, so, yeah. Does that answer your question, questions for now? Can we move on? Okay, great. So, next slide. Okay, so this is the Summer Lake Wildfire Risk Reduction Area. So this is kind of a zoom-out. All those red polygons are recent fires. Some of them are a little bit further back, like 2002, but, you know, Watson Creek, Bratton, and then Bootleg's off this map, I think, but it came right in there. And so we, as you can see, if you just look at the fire scars, there's this one little spot along Winter Rim that didn't burn. And we thought, well, maybe that would be a good place to start to focus and try and save what's left. So we went ahead and initiated several grant opportunities. And we were successful with the Oregon Department of Fish and Wildlife Mule Deer Initiative Grant, where it was pretty small, but we'll take, you know, every penny counts. We got 44.6 acres there. We had a RAP grant from the Forest Service, that was a great one, about 200 acres. We had our Watershed Council's first BLM grant for community wildfire assistance. That was about 470 acres. And then, not my grant, but I think it's still relevant to say that the landowners in there got a grant from the NRCS, and they're treating another 300 acres. So almost 1,000 acres treated in that really small chunk. And next slide, I think, is a zoom-in. Yeah, so that's a zoom-in of that area, and that just shows those different funding opportunities. So orange is the ODFW, blue is the US Forest Service RAP, yellow is the BLM, and red is the NRCS. So it's kind of cool to see how we can leverage all those different opportunities to really make a big impact in a landscape, instead of doing these random acts of kindness and little postage stamp things. This was a, this was a great, and that's all completed. So everything's been cut and piled, and then we'll be going for another grant to take care of the pile burning. Slight tangent, you know, typically, we have pile burning is the landowner's responsibility, because I use that as my in-kind match. Most grants need 25% to 30% match. But in this particular landscape, because of it being on Winter Rim, being so steep, having really weird weather behavior, I think James, Commissioner Williams, you know about that. And then also, because as we were in here working on this project, the beetle kill really took its toll on a lot of the fir up there. So, you know, from the time it took to do the bid tour and get a bid on how much it would cost to do this, to the time of completion, I would guess that greater than 60% of the trees in there died, just in that timeframe. So now we've got all these piles sitting in amongst red needles. And so it's going to be very complicated, so I wouldn't expect the landowner to address that on their own. So we're trying to get another grant to help a landowner with more technical support. Any questions there or additions? Next. So, what are our challenges? Of course, time is of the essence. We do lack capacity right now, you know, the Lake County Umbrella Watershed Council, we have expanded to, we have four people now. We have an admin, myself as Uplands Coordinator, Randy Neider's our streamer, our carrying coordinator, and we have Rhia Miles, and she's like an outreach, outreach and education and outreach coordinator. She's only part-time, so four of us, you know, doing all this work. So we're hoping to get some more capacity with that fifth grant, so that would be really helpful. The other things are, the, some of our landowners just don't understand that this is not how the landscape is supposed to look, because fire has been suppressed for so long. So it's kind of an uphill battle, not with all, but with some landowners that don't understand that, you know, the density of junipers or the conifers shouldn't be like that. It's not natural, because we've suppressed fire for so long. So we do have to do a lot of outreach and education before we can even begin any kind of implementation. We do have that lack of biomass utilization. It would be great to have other options other than pile burning, to get rid of that slash material, but that's just been, as you guys know, an uphill battle. And then post-fire restoration, you know, when Marcy Schrader was in this job, she didn't deal with very much post-fire restoration. And I'd say it's starting to get to be maybe at least 50% of my job. Some, during certain times of the year, it's 100% of my job. So that's, that's kind of another, you know, another thing to deal with that we hadn't really had to deal with at this level before. Awareness of home hardening techniques. We're really trying to get a little bit more involved with things like defensible space. We've done a couple workshops with that. And just teaching people or educating people or helping people find the resources to get themselves better, their actual, their structures and their homes better prepared for fire. Any questions there? Okay, next slide.
Autumn, can you just go one second? So, your post-fire restoration, can you kind of explain what happened?
Sure, we do it right now. So, post-fire recovery and restoration. So this has been kind of a new deal that we're all going through at the same time, so it's a learning process. So I'll start with the Bratton Fire. We were lucky in the sense that the Bratton Fire happened during the Labor Day fires of 2020. And because those were, that was in with so many other large fires across the state, we got recognition. And some emergency funding came out of the legislative session, and we were counted as one of the qualifying wildfires. So we were able to get an emergency response grant from OWEB, who got that money from the legislative session. They gave us $75,000, and basically, our plan of attack on that one was, let's just hang on to the soil, because it burns so fast and so hot that the intensity, you know, there was just, we were losing all of our soil, either to just wind or rain and runoff. So we did a large aerial seeding effort, just to try and hang on to what we had. Then the Cougar Peak Fire came along the very next year, and we had an emergency response grant. And even though it was a bigger fire, they only gave us $50,000 for that one. Well, this time, we changed our game up a little bit and did range drill seeding, because the aerial seeding, because of weather conditions and just a lot of things, aerial seeding wasn't super successful. We lost a lot of our seed to wind. So we tried range drill seeding, and that was much more successful. But we also had a good spot in Clover Flat, where it was flat. So we could access that with range drills. And then they allowed for some follow-ups. So those were like emergency, you had to spend that money in like three months. It was very tight turnaround. Then the legislator, legislative session, I guess, allowed for a better restoration and recovery grants. Those are longer and have more options. So this time, they did allow for Patton Meadow to be a qualified wildfire. They didn't have that in for the emergency response. So the Watershed Council applied for both Cougar Peak and Patton Meadow as a single fire, or a single grant, I guess I should say. And we were awarded $2.5 million. So with that, what we're doing is contour felling, excuse me, I'm getting over a cold, where you take the dead standing trees and you can drop them down. And basically, you're trying to like put them perpendicular to the slope. So you're making little terraces. And so you're hoping to catch some of the water and sediment from running off. And I don't know if you guys ever watched Price is Right, but my favorite analogy is the Plinko game. So you, it Plinkos down, instead of just shooting down one, you know, making a new like rivulet or a canyon, it has to like Plinko its way down, and it's just better on soil erosion. Also fence felling, which means, I mean, all these landowners, they had to replace their fences at their own dime. I mean, some of them got some help from FSA, I'm sorry, Farm Service Agency or NRCS, but a lot of folks just had to pay for it themselves. So we are trying to take the places where there are dead trees within, like that could fall on the fence, and clear those, so that the fence doesn't get destroyed immediately after replacement. Three minutes, okay. So herbicide spraying, the Beaver Dam analogs and the post-assisted log structures in the creeks to help build up that sediment, so we don't get all that sediment loss. Culvert and crossing repairs, and then we'll be doing some reseeding as well. And just as a side note to Bratton, Bratton does have a longer restoration grant as well, but the Soil/Water Conservation District is the applicant for that one. So that's being worked on too, but I didn't want to talk about it, because it wasn't my grant, or our grant. Okay, next slide.
So what is the seed formula? Is it all grass seed, or is it better brushin?
There's, there are specific fire seed mixes, and we've tried a couple of different, we've tried, let's see. Every one we've had has been different, because we're trying to learn. So, but it is heavier on grass seeds, non-native, like crested Siberian weed grass, orchard grass, things like that, for a couple reasons. One, that's beneficial to our landowners for their grazing purposes and for wildlife. Two, native forbs and native perennial bunch grasses don't have a very good success rate. And three, even if they did have a good success rate, the cost for them is out of control. So either I could help five landowners, or I could help one quarter of one landowner. So you kind of have to weigh your benefits. Also, the, it's kind of just, we're thinking of it as a placeholder. And so you, basically, what you're trying to do, even if you have to use non-natives to hold that place, that still gives your native, your natural regen, some time to keep against cheat grass. Just hanging on and keeping the cheat grass and Medusa head and Benada from taking over, because those invasive annual grasses love disturbance and they love fire. So what you're trying to do is just, hey, you don't grow here, let these other things grow, and then eventually, you'll start to get your natives coming back. I don't know if that makes sense. Yeah, okay. So this is, real quick, these are some other things that we wanted to talk about if we have time, but I don't think we do, so we can come back to it.
Autumn, we don't have any set, we have nothing else after this meeting, so please feel free to just go.
Okay, then, whoa.
I knew that by lunch.
We don't, we don't want to, we don't want to be here till people start getting angry, you know? But, you know, I mean, I know it's pressed up against lunch, but you're good.
Okay, well, it's, we're almost there, Ben, but thank you for that. So, yeah, biomass utilization, we talked about before. The risk map and insurance impacts, this one is a big one. I know some of you are aware of it. We are starting to get calls from our landowners that we've been engaged with, and they've been proactive about treatment, and they are having their ranch insurance dropped because they are in a wildfire risk area. That kind of all originated with the ODF wildfire risk map that went out. They did that on a timeline that was far too fast, because it was a directive from one of their Senate Bill 762 directives. That map was withdrawn, because it was so inaccurate. You know, it's a model, and the models are great, but models are just one step in the process. And no one ever came out and verified on the ground or ground truth or anything. So that actually was withdrawn. The problem is, as I understand it in my research, that other insurance companies basically hired their own GIS person and made a new model, which is similar. And so it's a concern, because if these, these folks that we're working with are treating their lands and getting it ready and doing defensible space, and they're still having their insurance dropped, that would be a request back to you guys to help us get that up the ladder, you know, to say, hey, this, this is going to like end some multi-generational families if they can't have insurance, because you said they're in a risk area. But I am not the expert on that, so if anybody wants to add to that?
I'd just say that, well, I mean, there's an article out, they're having meetings starting tomorrow.
But today, actually, right? Didn't you say, there was one at 9:00 AM today?
That was tomorrow.
Or tomorrow?
So, there's three of them. I think one of them was either today or tomorrow. And then I believe, once they wrap up those three meetings, that is then when they'll initiate the public comment period on that. And if you guys would like, I can forward that email to you guys all, if that is of interest to you.
Who's having these meetings?
The Oregon Department of Forestry, he's in the Board of Forestry.
We have, I got a phone call up here, week and a half, two weeks ago.
Yeah, I told her to call you.
Okay.
Sorry. Call your commissioner.
I will point out that where they are with the current risk map and what they're discussing is the inclusion of agriculture and irrigated lands, and how that factors into the risk map. And so, while it does not address the root causes or issues, I think it is very relevant for Lake County with all of the agriculture and either irrigated or non-irrigated agriculture land, how that falls within this risk map. So I think it is pretty timely that Lake County maybe has some involvement or tracks it a little bit, so.
Amy, you want to touch on the seed shortage, cone collection, grow out plans a little bit?
So we have a pretty significant shortage in seed, basically conifer seed to reforest our fires that we've had. And just kind of as an example, we've identified about 275,000 acres that need reforested within the big fires that we've had since 2018. And we only have enough seed for about 30,000 acres. So me, to me, it's really, really concerning, because Potteryosa pine needs a green tree source to reseed and regenerate. And with the fires we've had, like Bootleg, that are so big and high severity, you know, we have high severity patches that are big, like 50,000, 60,000 acres in size, without any green trees at all. And so without planting, you're not likely to get natural regeneration. And so without intervening by planting, you know, most likely what's going to happen is we're going to convert from a forested stand to a non-forested stand over time. And that's really concerning to me, when you think about recreation, timber production, watershed health, wildlife habitat, all the values that we have with our forested habitats. So we've kind of convened a local, I call it a seed collaborative group. It's Green Diamond, Collins Pine, the Forest Service, ODF, American Forest, and then the Watershed Councils. And we're working together to try to figure out ways to increase our conifer seed. So we're looking at things like collecting in cones, where maybe we haven't traditionally collected, like maybe on private land, if we can get permission from landowners. The other thing we're talking about is the concept of a production orchard, where you grow trees solely for the purpose of producing cones. It's kind of like an apple orchard, where it's irrigated and stimulated and fertilized. And they do everything they can to get the mass, you know, cone production off the trees within the orchard. None of that's going to happen overnight. Like a production orchard takes 10 years before you're really producing seed that makes a difference. But I really think, you know, we need to invest in that, and we need to be looking out into the future. We're going to continue to get big fires, we're going to get re-burns within the fires that we've had. So we need to be starting things right now to start increasing our seed for the future. So when it burns again, we have the seed on hand, and we can plant and regrow a forest.
And Amy, isn't one more factor, fun factor is, you need to collect seed from similar elevations.
Yes.
You can't be at 750 feet, the grant's passed, and expect it to work good at 470, you know, 5,000 feet, they can't.
Yes, exactly.
Thank you. And then, policy issues on lawn growth?
Yeah, I honestly don't know a whole lot about this, other than you guys are probably aware that at the national level, the Forest Service just passed policies around old growth and what we can and cannot do. and what we can and cannot do in old growth. And there's going to be amendments to our forest plans. That's really all I know at this point. But I think it has the potential to be concerning if it's too restrictive and what we can do within our old growth. I mean, we need to be managing our old growth to reduce the risk of wildfire or it's just going to burn up. So I think this is just a topic to maybe, you know, try to stay on the pulse of as much as you can.
And then prescribed fire programs. Jason, would you like to just give a brief overview of what's going on and how maybe the commissioners can support us in that?
Sure. Prescribed fire, you know, Oregon Department of Forestry recognizes that since 2018, especially in climate of Lake County, it's been to support the landowners for the use of prescribed fire as a tool, management tool. It's super important and the legislature supporting that with the Certified Burn Manager Program, support to prescribed burn associations, really getting that grassroots effort and getting private landowners more support, education, technical support. And so Oregon Department of Forestry is ramping up within the agency, readdressing something that we haven't before, but providing our landowners technical support. And then with, you know, Autumn talked about her outreach, the funding with OWEB support, maintenance of landscapes and fire adaptive with the ecological systems we have here. Fire is part of the systems and to encourage and support our landowners, reduce that liability, give them the support they need to use, utilize prescribed fire on their properties. And so it's, it's a work in progress, but again, you'll see Certified Burn Manager Program, working with the Department of Forestry and then the climate lake district. We're currently addressing trying to ramp up prescribed fire, support capacity to our private landowners to help them through the notification process, smoke management outreach to our landowners. You know, our prescribed fire experts out there with the Forest Service BLM, cross-boundary burns for efficiency. And then Autumn, and I guess, you know, is really a leader in bringing prescribed fire to a landscape in Oregon like nowhere else. Lake County is actually set up because of the work that's been done in the last five, 10 years with the climate lake forest health partnership, setting a landscape up to receive fire, super important. And now it's time to start implementing and bringing broadcast burning and pile burning to Lake County. So I think you're going to see Lake County being one of the leaders in the state of Oregon for prescribed fire implementation using contractors and then the partnerships with our federal and state agencies.
Oh, Jason, just a comment and maybe a question. Last week I sat in on the annual air quality meeting with DEQ. And, you know, they talked about how they're wanting to lower their quality ungulates per cubic meter down to nine. And I asked them if they were working with Oregon Department of Forestry because we have such a fuel loading issue and threats to our communities. And there was a lot of silence, you know. But then they did bring up an example where they were working in Bend, you know, with ODF and DEQ to try to figure out what they're going to do there, you know, in central Oregon and whatnot. And then it just so happens this morning I filled out a questionnaire from ODF talking about DEQ and it just, it just felt restrictive. You know, like we're not talking to each other, Oregon DEQ and Oregon Department of Forestry. I hope that we do talk to each other. I think it's gotten better since I was there, but I just didn't know if you're seeing any things that scratch your head and go, what are we doing?
Yeah, ODF.
Because I'd like to help, you know.
Yeah, we really do need help because the restrictions are getting tighter with DEQ. Because I think they don't understand the need on the landscape for wild, you know, wildland debris burning, forest open burning. And then ODF has a MOU with DEQ, you know, the memorandum about understanding to regulate forest land debris burning in the state of Oregon. And so they, we have that agreement with them, but DEQ is coming in with tighter restrictions, but yet not understanding the critical need on the landscape to manage the.
That was my point.
Yeah, the PM two point five, that smoke management for the, for the emissions and wildfire. And those conversations have to occur so we can utilize it as a tool. And then we have a responsibility to manage our smoke, you know, obviously. But we can do a good job with that. We're working on the relationships here to collectively manage our airshed. So I think it needs to be a big partnership, DEQ, ODF, but then all the, all the burners who are needing to burn, whether it's federal lands, private lands, and really own that smoke, manage the smoke, but we can do it well. But restricting it, it's like having old growth or whatever, it doesn't. Full-on preservation or restricting, restriction doesn't allow you to effectively manage your long-term and whatever you're looking at.
Yeah, and I think they're lowering it for a daily rate, not a one-hour rate.
No.
But cities like Burns and John Day are already at those rates almost.
Yeah.
If not slightly above. And if they lower up to those levels, it's, you know, without prescribed fire or wildfire.
And that's what we were talking about that in another meeting. We're getting deemed for fires that are in California and the smoke is up here. And that's, you know, that's hitting and keeping us restricted too. So, yeah.
And we've been trying to do a community response plan.
Yes.
The bar seems to keep getting moved on us. Amy?
Okay, let's go to the next slide. We're almost done here. Just wrapping up, we want to stay focused on active restoration, being really strategic about our planning across private and public lands, supporting our private landowners, leveraging these funds. There's so much money out there right now, it's mind-boggling. And just trying to, you know, be strategic about what we put in for and knowing that we can do what we say we're going to do and be competent and accountable to those funds. But overall, reducing the risk of catastrophic wildfires and increasing the use of prescribed fire in Lake County. And last slide is a slide of all of our partners, which I think is pretty impressive. There's probably even a few more that we need to update that. But this is, this is a great partnership that I'm really proud to be a part of. And I think that it really strengthens the Lake County Umbrella Watershed Council exponentially. If we were just doing stuff on our own, we would not be as successful as we are with the partnership. So thanks to everyone there. And I did bring some, we don't have climate lake forest health partnership swag really yet. So, but I brought to you a bunch of Lake County Umbrella Watershed Council swag. And then also in there you'll see a folder. And I've brought you just a draft version of our checklist that we've been working on for prescribed fire. We have those sent out to some professional printers and those will be really nice folders and pamphlets and they'll be right in the rain. And we're hoping to like give that out to our landowners so they'll have a place where they can keep all of their information. And if they fill those checklists out in their entirety, it won't, it won't eliminate the risk, but it will greatly reduce the risk of liability and also just help them make sure they're doing all the things that they're supposed to do because it's super complicated. And I know when I came on, I thought if I can't figure it out, you know, maybe no one else can either. Not that I'm that great at figuring things out, but it's just super complicated. And so just wanted to give you guys a preview of that checklist. And also there's some stickers and some things that you can advertise your favorite nonprofit in Lake County, right? So thank you so much for your time and yeah, we'll see you guys next year.
Thank you, guys. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. No other business to come before us. Does anyone have anything else? You can go ahead, you're in the meeting. Oh, go ahead.
Autumn, how much money does Lake County give to your outfit?
Um, we received a grant of, I think it was seven thousand dollars. That was a great opportunity because it didn't have any restrictions. So it was basically a check that we, we put it into the Lake County Umbrella Watershed Council's account, but it's for the KLFHP. So we've used it a few times for meetings and tours and just like for refreshments and things. And we will be using it, some of it for this upcoming fifth. So yeah, it's, it's been super helpful because most of our funds are all like earmarked for really specific things and it's hard to cover other things, so.
But the county is not paying for any fuel reduction?
No.
That is super, super expensive.
Yeah, and actually the county is one of our constituents, if you will, because we actually have in the plans to do work on the county's ownership. So, yeah.
Well, thank you for your work.
What do you mean by that?
Meaning we treat the county just like any other private landowner. So if the county was interested in finning and we have the money for it, we could do some finning or burning or weed treatments on the county's property as well.
I have some questions.
Yes. Would you like to come up to the mic?
My name is Loma Wharton. I'm an educator. I really like what this climate county lake forest health partnership group has done because they've done your job for you commissioners. And we talked about this about four years ago. If you would have signed resolution under health, safety and welfare, take back your jurisdiction from the state and the Fed to clean and log with your title one, two, and three monies you get from the, from the government, you have the authority to clean and log three hundred feet back from every road in this county, up to three and a half miles in the wildlife urban interface. Okay, that's what you could do. You wouldn't, actually, I would hire one of these two ladies to be your natural resources director. But they've done your job. This is what I talked to you a long time ago. You have this authority and you know what? It doesn't cost you a dime. The county makes money on taxes, licenses, fees and permits. And bring the jobs back, not the huge debt that this organization gets in grant money.
Thank you for your comment. Is there any other comments for today? Sorry, again, I can't be there in person. Hope you all have a great day, I guess. And again, thank you to the climate lake forest health partnership for presenting today. Really good work. I was actually anticipating a little bit more discussion on the risk map, but I'm grateful that everyone's at least got it on their radar and they're looking at it. All right.
Thanks for coming over, yes.
We'll close the meeting today at precisely twelve nineteen. Thank you all.